Guess don't think we'll pass it on. Consent agenda. Everybody has that in front of them. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And second. Any discussion, comments, questions?
You have one quick question about the personnel items. On page two, uh, the schedule of grades and job titles. The very last two, twenty-two and twenty-four. Show no budgeted full-time or part-time positions for those categories, although I think we have those positions, right? There really.
We do have those.
Positions, yes.
I think that was just an oversight. You are correct. I hope we still have those positions. As Scott and I.
Yeah, yeah. I was.
Well, we got some bad news.
It's lighter there. Go back to that. Yeah, we will update that. We'll make that change. Thank you for noting that, Rick.
And I just have a comment. It was really delightful reading some of the comments from McCullough. And from the opening, uh, that were shared. As part of the consent agenda, yeah.
Are any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The post same sign. Motion carries. Um, before we get too far, I'd like to appoint, uh, Dr. Stubbs is our treasurer pro tem before we get to that point. So thank you for agreeing to do that. Next is governance. The first item, the public hearing. So I'm required to read this, so I'm going to do my best. So. Item A, public hearing advertised additional appropriations. Secretary has presented proof of publication of notice to taxpayers of hearing on the matter of additional appropriation proposed to be made on account of the renovation and improvements to the string town location. In this form of affidavit. Of publication in the Evansville Courier-Press on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. However, due to unforeseen circumstances, EVPL had to withdraw the additional appropriation resolution. To be read and heard at a public hearing of the city council on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Therefore, the EVPL Board of Trustees will not be holding a public hearing today on this matter. Upon the recommendation of the EVPL administration and the Building and Grounds Committee. I would entertain a motion from this board to rescind the previously approved preliminary bond resolution. Dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four and reimbursement resolution dated May ninth, twenty twenty-four associated with the string town project. Project. So I'd entertain a motion as such.
So moved.
So motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by aye, by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries your names.
Think you need to do a hell of a yes.
Oh. Okay. Unanimous.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Sabrina, I vote aye.
Aye.
Dr. Stubbs, Joe.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Sheila. Is that good enough?
Yes, thank you.
Because previous notice of the motion to rescind was provided in the board packets and no, your, your reversal action has been taken. This motion requires a majority vote. That's what I just did, right? Follow the rules. Okay, item B, recommendation of project for general obligation bond. Due to not being able to move forward with the EVPL string town project and with a desire to continue the approved facilities master plan moving forward. It is the recommendation of the Building and Grounds Committee that the EVBL. Board of Trustees authorized postings for the financing of a general obligation bond not to exceed. Four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the renovation of EVPL Oakland. As outlined in the EVPL facilities master plan. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
The motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Rick?
Yes, aye.
Sabrina? I vote aye.
Aye.
Dr. Stubbs, Joe?
Aye.
Sheila?
Aye.
Vote unanimous. Preliminary bond resolution. This preliminary bond resolution establishes the maximum amount to be borrowed, maximum term of, term of repayment and maximum interest rate. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Second. Rick? Any discussion? Rick?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Declaration of official intent to reimburse expenditures. If the library pays any preliminary costs related to the project in advance of receiving the bond proceeds. It may want to reserve its ability to be reimbursed from bond proceeds after the closing. The Internal Revenue Service requires that a library declare its official intent to reimburse is documented. In this resolution in order to reserve this ability to reimburse. I will entertain that in the form of a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. Hearing none? Rick?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Eric, aye. Dr. Stubbs?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Sheila?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All are approved as presented.
Good job.
Yeah.
That was.
All right. Code of Conduct.
So as you can see in your board book, this is a recommendation to update and the code of conduct. We have not updated this since twenty fifteen. It has been looked at actually for probably. One to two years, definitely since we brought on Abby as security manager. Uh, we wanted to make sure that she was in her role, got acclimated. And then Abby was able to bring some great insight to this. We went through a couple of different versions with Steve. And his thoughts on it to make it a little more clear what is prohibited and what is not, and what you have before you is our final draft.
So before we entertain any motions.
Just the, which, which is the final draft I had. This. One is dated. This is the two thousand two.
Oh. Page fifty-one in your packet.
Okay.
So. Again, I have no reason to doubt that I'm supportive of this, but I really haven't had a chance to read it very carefully. But I don't know, the rest of the board has had a chance to look through it and feels comfortable with it because I can, I can feel comfortable if everybody else has, but I will confess, I have not read it.
I will say that I have reviewed it. And I've had discussion with, I reached out to Scott, uh, earlier today, emailed him. Uh, for some changes. Or, or about the changes, what changes were made. Uh, they su- uh, supported those changes. Uh, and I think that this is, personally, I think this is a great redraft and well-needed, uh, well-written. I do have some questions once we get a motion on the floor. But, uh. I don't have any problem, Mr. President, supporting it. But I don't want to speak for the whole board.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion so we can talk about it.
Yeah.
With regards to this, and I have read it. And one of the things that I was looking at was the issue that regards personal belongings. And I mean, for the most part, it's fine. All personal belongings must be kept within sight and at a minimum. What does that reference? Uh, in other words, you know. Having been in schools and kids bringing backpacks. I know oftentimes people that come into libraries have a tendency to bring backpacks or, or whatever. And so my question is. Is there some way of referencing what, what we mean when we say? At a minimum. Just for clarification, because I just think that some point in time. If anyone were challenged on this, we would have a difficult time defending it.
Well, generally, I would say probably one to two bags would be minimum. Abby, would you agree with that?
Yep.
Um, and the reason behind one to two, we have some people with many, many items and/or an overflowing cart of items.
I understand, I understand, but my, my point is simply that.
Definitely.
For clarification's sake, we may want to include that in this statement. If that makes any sense at all. In other words, when somebody questions, well, what do, what do you mean by a minimum? What you reference as a minimum and what I reference are two very different things.
Right.
So. If you're talking about one or two bags minimum.
Right.
Then I think we need to state that. If we're talking about, it's okay for me to bring in a, a backpack. And inside my backpack. I have three other bags. I, I think we just.
Yep.
Yeah. This was safety.
Yeah. Um, I'll defer to Steve on this. We did talk about it. We talked about baby strollers and diaper bags and backpacks and all of that stuff, too. Do you recall why we were phrasing it more loosely, Steve?
Yeah, but I, I actually recommended that, uh, that we've not, that we'd have some size limitation because people were stealing books.
Right.
I don't think that library thought that was a big problem. As I did, so.
Yeah.
It's really, it is a critical issue.
Yep.
Because people, not only that, they just bring their stuff in there. We don't, we've had trouble with. Um, bedbugs and things like that with people bringing things into the library. So it is a problem. I'm not, I'm not sure what the right answer is.
I mean, it's a, and it, trust me, it's a board, if everybody wants to agree with that, that's fine. I, I just look at things. In, in a little different, different manner, having dealt with. Backpacks and large, large articles coming into, into schools, and it's always been a concern. Because it's something that is very difficult to control.
What's in that language can be tinkered with.
And, and, and that's all I'm saying is that. In, in a legal situation, I don't believe that we would be able to. Stand up against what a minimum is.
Yeah, you're right. I, I mean, there's a lot of general informa- or general language.
Right.
It's not legally specific.
And rightly so.
But I think one of the things this policy does is allow security and administration to use their judgment. And, and to a minimum or at a minimum to me would be how disruptive is it to the general business of the library? So somebody coming in with a stroller with a baby in it. Is probably not going to be disruptive as someone coming in with a baby stroller that's overflowing with. A, an accumulated amount of debris or something else. So I think that. Non-specific language gives administration and security a little bit of latitude. And I understand what you're saying too, Sheila, that it wouldn't maybe stand up in court. But if we're able to, to tie it to disruptive to the general business, then. I could see that.
Well, maybe you simply say all carried. Personal belongings. There's a difference between bringing in a stroller and bringing in a backpack. But like I said, if, if that's what.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just calling attention to it. If that's what the majority wants to go with, I'm fine with it.
Is there like been some specific issues that you're trying to address? Um, basically, the issues are, we don't obviously have issues with backpacks or even luggage per se. It's what we have more problems with. Is unattended items in the library that block egress. Um, to getting to the stacks or getting around chairs and things like that, uh, that become tripping hazards and things like that. So we don't want unattended objects. Um. So this would address that? Yes.
The other issue is, has been bedding, but that is also covered in a separate bullet point. When it's under sleeping, that we do not allow people to bring in bedding and sleep in the library.
Can we, can we go and get this on the floor?
Yeah.
So we can make it.
You can.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to consider the revised code of contact.
There's a motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion. So carrying on with the discussion we've had, you know, that I think there was something that, um. You know, cause I, I'm a specifics kind of person. Um, but I understand the generalities and discretion necessary coming along. And there's a, there's, there's a happy medium in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and I think Rick used the words that makes sense, and that is. At a size not to disrupt other patrons or library operations. Which, you know, that, that becomes a little more specific. It's still fairly general. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot in this that's very specific. You know, no vaping, no tobacco, no guns, no, no knives. But there are other pieces of this, and, and I did, I was able to speed read through this. Um, there are other things here that are also a little bit.
Ambiguous.
Ambiguous, and you kind of, and, and, and that's why I think, you know, we, we hire smart people and, and, and fair-minded people that are in the, in the business of providing a service to the community. And so I think their intent, you know, yeah, I, I would, I would always start off with. Their intent is to make sure that the library runs smoothly and safely for the, for the good of the majority. And, and so I think we have to give them some latitude. Now, I don't know about at a minimum. That's al- that's almost too broad for me, but.
And so if I could interject, and so the other thing for me is that. We have people on the board who do have experience in other areas. So with Sheila. Having the experience with the backpack in the school, that's an area that I wouldn't, I wouldn't know about. And so when she speaks to it. I think we should listen to that part of it because it could happen. Based on her experience. So I, I wouldn't just kind of say, man.
But to be clear, we would never. Not allow backpacks. We want students to come, students bring their backpacks every day. Often adults bring a backpack or a purse that is the size of a backpack. So. I do think that, I do like the, I like the language as well that could be said, all personal belongings must be kept within sight and at a minimum size not to interrupt the library experience of others or impede egress within the library. And I could easily amend that sentence to state that.
I like that statement because when we were talking about limiting it to two items. I do know we, we have a lot of, uh, patrons that take advantage of the library that are in situations where they're carrying a lot of their. Personal items with them, and two black trash bags could be considered.
Be two items.
Two items, which would impede egress, which would become problematic. So.
Which also has been.
A problem sometimes.
Yes. I, I work down here and I observe.
Yeah.
A lot of that. Yeah.
So we could amend that statement. Further discussion still pending, obviously, but I can easily amend that statement.
So will you reread what you, what you said?
All personal belongings must be kept within sight and at a minimum size not to interrupt the library experience of others. And or impede egress within the library.
In censuses?
Steve?
You know, with, this has been a longstanding problem. I mean, we've had this discussion over the years. And at one time, we wanted to limit people bringing bags in. You say that we haven't, but we have. You know, limited what people could bring in because we had so much theft going on in the library.
But we do not have that much theft anymore. We have not had that problems in the library.
I'm saying this, this has been a longstanding problem. It's been raised in different formats. We've had people come in with, uh. Luggage with bedbugs. That's a recent problem that I've heard about.
Yep.
Uh, we've got people, you know, outside the library with great big carts. You know, we don't want the big cart coming into the library. So I mean, it's, it's been a longstanding question. I don't think there's a perfect answer on that.
Would you say the revised language that Heather read would still suffice?
I, I, like I said, it's, it's an issue that's been here for twenty years and, and it's probably going to be here for another twenty years.
Yep.
As long as people come in the libraries. I mean.
From a safety perspective, I just see you not coming with anything, but that's not realistic.
Yeah, that's, and that's why, at one time, that's what the, the discussion was about. You know, we didn't want, but obviously we can't.
So would we make a new motion or would we entertain changing the motion to? As amended. As amended.
Yeah, I think somebody, if, if, if everybody's comfortable with this, whoever made the motion can just amend their motion.
I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I just think that. Obviously, it has to be a, a fluid document. Because as times progress, uh. People that are doing things become much more savvy. And that, as long as the board stays on top of that and recognizes that, I'm Eric, I'm like you, I'm very specific. I, my profession required it. Uh, it's just a matter of trying to be proactive and yet allow people to have the freedom that they need. To enjoy the facilities. And so as long as it's fluid, I'm, I'm fine.
So you've amended your motion?
I would like to amend.
So you accept an amendment and then you've got to vote on the amendment and then vote on the amended motion.
Correct.
Okay. She doesn't think.
I will withdraw my motion.
Yeah.
Then we have to.
That was, I will, yeah.
Oh, another second?
Yeah.
Uh, we grow?
Yeah. So I'd entertain a motion that we approve the new post-code of conduct with the verbiage that was outlined by Heather. Few minutes ago.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Additional discussion?
Yes, I do. I have a question regarding the trespassing. Uh, it says for short-term access. Remember, it's opposed, patrons should limit their time on library property to returning library materials for. A short term. Did you all discuss what that looks like? The short term is? What?
Um. Short term is enough to return your materials or to briefly use the internet if you're working shift work or something like that, but. Not to sleep on property essentially.
That's not what it said. It just says short term.
Well, there's another bullet for sleeping on library property.
We might want to just say that because, um. We did discuss at some point about the sleeping out there and we addressed that, right? At some, at another discussion. Can we? You refresh my mind about that? Or is this the only thing that talks about trespassing now? Is it this?
I don't recall what year it was, but we did have a, uh, we filed the trespassing. The trespass permits so that the EPD would. As they were doing their rounds, would check on that. And they, they, we posted signs on all the, uh, location on the buildings themselves. And, um. Then anytime we saw somebody, then we were able to call EPD and they would come.
And we just refiled that, didn't we?
Yes.
Yep, yep. So this is the code of conduct when it says short term. I'm just saying, a short term for me might be, I've only been out here a couple of days, you know? That's short. That's not, I hadn't been out here a week. Or I've been out here a month. I had been out here two.
So sleeping is expressly prohibited. In another portion. Um, trespassing as it's defined here. Is, and the reason for short, short-term access is because we do know that there are people who come. Who work shift work and use the free wifi. It is on twenty-four seven. And that is purposeful and intentional so that some people can use the wifi. But your short-term access is limited to using our library resources and services.
So you mean inside, is that what you're saying?
Even in the parking.
You can sit in the parking lot.
But if you are here, sleeping or not using our services and resources, you are trespassing. If you're not using the wifi, if you're not doing it for legitimate reasons. And you are here overnight. That is the trespassing because trespassing really only, uh, refers to when we're closed and/or if you have already been banned. And you come back.
Have a trespassing warrant issued against you. Correct.
Okay, and then the, the other, uh, item that I would like to just ask a question off of clarification. Uh, with under personal behavior and conduct, it says, uh, all of the library patrons and staff should expect enjoy the library, da, 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 da. And that, uh, I guess the staff will speak to the people if something is out of line?
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, there is training, I guess, that every staff person understands how to communicate. And what to say and steps to take and things. Escalate that they know what to do.
Yep, that is part of Abby's job.
Okay. Good job, Abby.
Yeah, I think you do make a nuance point. I was just looking up the actual definition of. Trespass versus loitering.
Mm-hmm.
And what we're describing is more like loitering. Standing by idly with no intended business purpose. And then if you loiter, then you become a trespasser.
Correct.
Because you, I mean, I just thought, you could, you could play semantics all day long.
Right.
And I think that's really more what we're saying. We don't want people loitering on our parking lot if you're not doing something.
Correct.
Yep.
So there is a motion on the floor. Is there any additional discussion? Sabrina, are you comfortable with where it is right now? The other thing is, and I think, and since we're still kind of in discussion. Sheila made a good point that if this is a fluid document and we can change it as we need to, there's things evolve. Because that obviously, based on the actual rationale, has not been our history.
Correct.
Since it's been sitting like this since twenty fifteen.
Well, I should say, it hasn't been updated or edited.
Been reviewed.
Every year, you review all the policies, but if we don't have any needed changes, we don't bring them to you. We have for many years known this policy needed an update. It truly has taken us. Several years to get to where we felt it really needed to be, based on a lot, a lot of conversations.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor. Any additional discussion?
The only thing I'd like to add is, can you report back to us how this new policy is?
Sure.
Felt?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, I'm sure Abby would love to report back how much it's going to help part in her job, as a matter of fact.
All right. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. All right, finance report, Lori.
Um, for the reported appropriations as of the six months ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Our appropriation balance was nine million, three hundred thirteen thousand eight, nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. Or approximately fifty-five percent of the original budget. Um, we're actually, uh, in very good shape and I'll discuss a little bit later on our quarterly, um, halfway mark, uh, reports. Our investment balances year to date or June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. For all four funds in the State Investment Pool Trust Indiana. Is sixteen million, six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Our average daily yield for June was five point three three oh one. Down a little over tenth of a percent since May. And the average daily yield year to date was five point three seven three eight, or down eight hundreds of a percent since May.
Three bills.
For July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, we have total invoices of two million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-two cents. Payroll dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four for three hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and fourteen cents. And payroll dated June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four for five hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents. And this is in the form of a motion.
Your second.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Quarterly budget status update.
So in your packet is a, uh, two-page update of our budget, including revenue, uh, for the first half for the second quarter. Ending June thirtieth. And as you can see on the top half of the first page, we did receive our property tax. And other miscellaneous taxes in our tax settlement. Um, is later in June, a little bit later in June than we normally anticipated. Uh, but we did receive it in time to close out the books for June thirtieth. Uh, if you go over to the far right-hand column, you'll see what our budget order or what our certified budget was, uh, at the be- very beginning of the year. For the areas where we do put in a budget. And that total was seventeen million, one hundred ninety-two thousand. If you go then to the far right-hand column where it says anticipated revenue. This includes the two million dollar estimate of our circuit breaker tax credit reductions. Um, that were, uh. Provided by the state that we're looking as a decrease. So as you can see, our anticipated revenue right now. Um, with what we've collected, plus then the taxes that the state estimated that we would receive. Is down, um, to fifteen million, one oh eight. So we are. Again, that two million dollars which is attributed to the circuit breaker tax credit. Hopefully, our interest will continue to do well. As you can see, we're two hundred six percent above what we budgeted for the year. Uh, but that could all change very quickly come this fall. Um, so we're keeping an eye on that, but right now we're in good shape, uh, with our interest income. And then what we have yet to collect. Uh, you can see, um, based on our anticipated revenue of property taxes, and that again includes our circuit breaker tax credit reduction. Or our tax cap, and we have, uh, collected fifty-seven percent if you're going by that number. If you're going by our certified budget. Then we've collected, uh, forty-seven percent of our property taxes. And again, until we get that final number in our settlement in December, we won't know what the final figure of the, um, tax cap reduction was. The expenditures then start at the bottom half of page one and continue on through page two. And I've highlighted in turquoise. Cause I like to say the word turquoise. Um, three areas where we're keeping a very close eye on where we're already significantly over budget for the year. Um, or we've. Let me rephrase that. We're not over budget. We have utilized a large portion of what we budgeted. And those are in our office supplies. And as I mentioned, at the end of the year. We anticipated this because the ink cartridges for our printers, both public and staff use ones. Are. Are extremely high and they just continue to increase uh in cost. Plus, whenever we change the printers um either on the public side or put a new um. Put a new version out or or an updated version um. When we do that, then we have, they, they get you every time by. Creating a different number of toner cartridge that goes into that particular printer. And so then. We sometimes get stuck if we have over uh purchased. A particular numbered cartridge. Um, and so then we have to try to utilize those best we can. Um, we try to keep an eye on that and coordinate with I T when those. Things are happening so we don't. Uh, again, end up with a large overstock of old cartridges that we can't use. Uh, one other area that is uh has been expended over the fifty percent. A year today is our cleaning and building supplies. That's a lot of our janitorial supplies. It's also an area where we have been taking out. A lot of the um supplies that um. For the new programs that our security and Abby have implemented in into our. Um, locate all locations. Um, it can be everything from an evacuation, emergency, first aid kit. Um, we're putting more into them uh because we found that they were lacking in some areas. So we're trying to put more um products and more. Things um into those kits and into our locations to help our staff. And our patrons. So we're um watching that one as well. And we'll likely just move money from another um line item later on. And then our other one, of course, as we again talked about in twenty twenty-three is our postage. Um, we have expended um. Seventy-seven percent of our postage budget year to date. Now, we just bought a bunch of new forever stamps because. The postage is going up again, and so we tried to uh purchase some forever stamps to have on stock. Uh, before for mailing out our bills and some other uh correspondence. So that we wouldn't have um to pay the higher. Per, per stamp rate. If you go back up to our income, I have this year. Um, my staff has uh helped insisted in this. Recording uh the postage that has been purchased by our passport. Office. So you can see um what's been purchased year to date. Is uh three thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. And that is um basically money taken in, but it does increase our budget. Uh, we still have to use our postage budget to offset those expenses, but we are collecting however much. It's being charged to us, or at least collecting that amount of money in cash.
And. And and I may be incorrect on this, but isn't there an interlibrary loan process where. It also impacts our postage rate or am I thinking of something else?
So yes, we have the interlibrary loan um program. We subscribe through the state to Info Express. Once a year, we pay out that amount, and that has already been taken out of the budget at this point in time too. So. Yes, that it, that attributes a little bit to that higher.
But we will mail out the state interlibrary loans on occasion. And that is at book rate through our postage machine, so.
Yeah, we have a special rate through the postal services for that. So like I said, in all, we're in really good shape. Um, we are expending our budget. Um. We will likely have some transfers towards the end of the year to. Offset some line items where we've gone over a little bit and from areas where we haven't expended money this year. And those will come um in, usually in December. But I will give you another quarterly. Update at the end of September.
And did you want to mention what the coin op printer revenue was? In relation to what was spent, Lori? Did you want to update? It looks like we've, for the quarter, we've received. I'm reading this. Correctly, twenty-two thousand and change, twenty-two six.
That, that's, that's part of, we have that every year. That's, that's the public. Public printers.
Right, but that's.
Why not is public.
But when you reference that in terms of that's money coming in from our, our printing and.
Yeah.
Copy basically um to help offset those charges of two hundred cartridges and things like that. You just can't offset that one item. It's kind of the same as passport mailing.
Any additional questions for Lori? Thank you. All right, other business. E V P L Central renovation, Scott?
Yes, um. We. Unfortunately, we went through the bid process um for Central and the. Bids came back um higher than expected. Um, for the scope of work that we are. So we met with the um Building and Grounds Committee um. And based off all the conversation administration had with building and grounds or architects and things like that, uh, we came up with this recommendation for the board. Um, upon review of the bids for E V P L Central renovation project and with guidance from the Building and Grounds Committee. It is the recommendation of the E V P L administration to reject all bids and rebid the project. With a decreased scope. So right now, this is just being written, written to the record to. Do that. We're not going to accept biz based off of the recommendation of building grounds. Uh, and we're going to work with um. Our architect to look at that scope again to see if we can reduce some of those costs and bring it back in line for. Uh, the amount we've bonded for and to make sure we're covering. Everything that we have outlined in a facilities plan in a more cost-effective way. We had a, honestly, we have some scope creep. Um, that happened when we were going through this project. Uh, it's really hard to compete when you have that nice McCullough library. We're trying to do some of the same things, but. This building is a much larger scale, so we have to look at some things differently. But it's still going to be a fantastic project and in the end result, it's going to look like McCullough in a lot of ways and look freshly neat and. Clean and all of that. Not that our buildings don't look like that now because they are. Really maintained by our custodial staff.
I tell, I tell you, we don't need to do anything with that.
No, just informational.
So. Next item, the North Park renovation, change order number one.
And I do not have a copy of that in. Want to me unless, yes, I do. It's on the backside. Um, and and what this document is, is a A I A change order um that we bring before the board to uh be ratified. In this case, uh. We, this was done because the end date. That we've been working on for this project um had changed based off of when we could get. Materials. And so because it was part of the contract, we had to amend the contract in terms of a change order to extend that end date.
So for the record, there is no.
There's.
Changing clause. It's just, it's just a date change.
Right, but I will tell you at this time right now, since we started the project. Um, there will probably, well, there will be a change order forthcoming. We just don't know what that amount will be yet. We're looking at some things right now.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the change order.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Uh, uh, item on other business that's not there. We had asked at the last meeting for some research to see if they. The historical resolution on the topic that Sabrina brought forward. Um, could be located in, and they did find it. So I think uh Scott, if you want to speak to it.
Sure, um. We did find that resolution. It dated back to when we actually built these buildings and bid um. And so it was a long time ago. Steve remembered it was before any of our administrative staff was here, but as I said before last meeting, um, we have had. Language in our R F P documents and there is. Some language in the A I A bid documents um based on that as well. But this is the official board resolution that was passed um. On the eighth day of February, two thousand two. So we will be using this document as we go forward to be part of a. Addendum of all of our R F Ps and all of our bid documents per um the resolution of the library board dated. The eighth day of February, two thousand two. But with that said, um. At any time, the board could um. Revise this resolution and bring it back, change, modify any way you want, but that is at the discretion of the board. But right now, we do have one that we can use and add as an addendum.
Any comments or questions? Thoughts? Hearing none. Announcements.
Announcements. Um. We just touched on it slightly. Um, the E V P L North Park building project has started. Um, we have our temporary wall up and they are working on that side of the building to remove some car- carpeting already. They removed the cirque desk area already. So they're moving very quickly as it stands right now. Um, and, but I do want to commend the staff and all the staff that worked on that project, boxing books. To get them off the shelf so they can remove carpet, put new carpet down. And all those things did a tremendous job. Um, we're getting to be pros at it because they. Did it a lot faster and really streamlined our projects. We learned a lot of things from when we did McCullough. So it was a lot. Smoother and I commend Heather and her team and Veronica and her team at E V P L North Park and all those other staff members that went out there and assisted in with the project. Because it really went well so far. So knock wood. Um, come January, we will have a fully renovated uh. North Park Library. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out there is um. Summer reading is going fantastic. The staff are doing a great job promoting it. Everyone from the marketing team and all the. Uh flyers and programs and everything you see advertising is doing great. Our numbers are better than we've seen. I don't want to steal any thunder. Because Erica will report on that later this summer and do a full board report, but it's going very, very well. And the staff are working really hard on it. Exciting things going on. So those are the uh. Items I wanted to make as part of the announcement.
Any other announcements? I will call the D D P G.
Well done.
Always want that all in there, I think.